We are ready to start.
Okay.
The last session of the core team meeting for the 2,000 point in three strategic planning.
All right. Magnus and Turner are not here. Vieri Vios?
Here.
Hembling?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
We have a forum.
Ready?
Person present. A team planner.
Awesome.
Your show.
All right, we are ready too. Welcome to the last core team meeting for strategic planning as your wonderful board member just pointed out. So Terry and I are excited to be with you tonight for the last evening. One, because it's daylight savings, and two, because our agenda is a little bit late for tonight. We may actually get you out before dark, which would be a first for all of you, which would be awesome. So we'll see how we do. So it has been, I think, five weeks since our third meeting. We pushed this one out a little bit further to accommodate some schedules. And so I want to just really start by, first of all, thanking you again for your participation. And before tonight is over, we'll turn things over to your superintendent and ask her if she'd like to say a few words as we close out this activity. But we do want to review with you a little bit about where we planned. So, one more time, I posted your vision and mission. Oh, and also, housekeeping detail. Apologies that we did not bring copies of the running meeting notes with us tonight. We actually did, but when we were flipping our coin about whose car to drive, Terry, we chose mine and they're in her car. So, sorry about no running meeting notes tonight, our apologies for that. But your, one more time, your vision and mission. Thinking boldly, caring deeply, and advocating courageously is the vision statement. The mission statement being cultivating curiosity, fostering learning, and nurturing compassion in our fearless thinkers for a better tomorrow. So those are the statements that will be forwarded to the Board of Education for their approval. The Board of Education will be approving the foundational pieces of the plan, and then the administration will be moving forward with action items and strategies that we'll talk about tonight to be housed within them. So, we talked about core values. At Yellow Springs Schools, we value a diverse and inclusive community, supporting and nurturing all students on their learning journey, encouraging critical and creative thinking, problem-solving, active inquiry, and positive action. Students, families, and staff who are involved, engaged, and curious. Education in harmony with the environment. The arts as integral, core learning. And collaborative and consistent communication and conversation. So, if you'll remember, we talked about critical issues and how those become strategic priorities, and then they morphed or got bundled into goal areas. And we talked about these being the goals by which the district will continue to make great progress. So everything that the district now does in the next several years will be aligned, hopefully, very much directly with one or more of these district goal areas. And if you'll recall, we had our goals, there were five of them. Bold teaching and learning. Facilities. Finance. School and community engagement. And deep caring. So again, anything the district does, I'm hoping the board will ask, superintendent or treasurer will ask, teachers and staff members will say, "I'm working on this. Which goal area are we going to assign this to?" And it may seem like semantics, but assigning it and following it up on, following up on strategies, initiatives, programs, seeing through the eyes of the strategic plan will make it really real for the citizens of Yellow Springs, and in particular, for teaching staff and other staff in the district. So, the last thing you all did before we left, and I remember we had some fun with wordsmithing and all that kind of good stuff, is we talked about the goal statements that go with our goal. And the goal statements are important because it tells us, it defines, when we do this right, what it looks like. So when we are successful at bold teaching and learning, and all the things that might be aligned to a goal called bold teaching and learning. Achievement, PD for staff, training, facilities that meet learning needs. Could be a facility strategy, could be a teaching and learning strategy. When we are successful with all of that in bold teaching and learning, the statement says, "Yellow Springs Schools expands academic opportunities and strengthens and deepens the teaching and learning experience through PBL, inquiry-based, experiential learning for each student to flourish on their chosen path." So I'll stop there and just ask all of you to look at that one more time. Do we need to move the screen for anybody?
Yeah, and you need to go back the slide.
Oh, I do?
Please. I'm going to record this live tonight.
Yep. Thank you. Got it? So, this is the first goal and the first goal statement that was drafted. Now, what we're going to ask the board to do in a board meeting is approve visions, mission, core values, and goals, right? And those are the foundational structures for the plan. Everything else is, at this point, just a dream. Or there is work already being done in the district that perhaps the district could go back and say, "Now that we've got these five goals, and we have these two or three, you know, this PBIS program, or this PD for teachers that we're doing on dyslexia, or something like that, let's talk about where we want to, you know, funnel it." And yeah, we're going to funnel that dyslexia stuff probably in this bold teaching and learning goal area. So, as you look at this goal statement, does it still feel good to you? They felt pretty good to you when we left you five weeks ago. But these are drafts, and so this is a time to speak up if any word or words still remain.
Cheryl, can I ask, are we going to be doing smaller work around each of these today?
Yes.
How about, can you send this to me so I can print this for everybody?
Sure.
Is that possible?
Send.
What we're going to do, work around each of these.
Okay.
Do we have it on dock nipping? Is it something that you've already sent?
Yes. It was in the running meeting notes. Yes. And I have them on this machine. I get out of this, I can only mail them out by person. Okay.
And I'll take care of it.
The other thing we can do is rather than have a whole group looking at all five of these, we can go through them very quickly and ask the small groups to cover that first.
How would that be?
Okay. So the second one is the facility school. Yellow Springs Schools provides a safe, comfortable, and assessable learning environment that inspires current and future educational excellence. So again, should there be changes to your facilities, new facilities, you know, whether even if it's four or five years from now, a parking lot gets reworked, whatever, whatever it might be, that facilities-related goal, maybe it's a new lighting system, maybe it's something for safety and security, a new door system, or a new window, who knows? Whatever it might be, it would be to better the safe, comfortable, and assessable learning environment for all students. The third goal is finances. Y S Schools, Yellow Springs Schools, use resources strategically to support the district's mission and plans for a sustainable tomorrow. School and community engagement. Through a culture of connection and collaboration, we foster inclusive engagement and community building that is accessible, relevant, and participatory. And the last one, last but not least, deep caring. Yellow Springs Schools prioritizes a culture of kindness, belonging, and well-being for all members of our school community. So we're going to, we're going to ask you to think about these five goals and to choose one that's near and dear to your heart. What we would really like to do is have, I counted, and I think there are at least 20 folks here, and maybe 22, is I would like to have three, maybe four people at least in each group. So, so we'll talk about that a little bit further. So, as I said, we've gotten to the point where I just want to point out through this graphic that vision, mission, goals, that's the core team's job. That's what you all have done through this practice. And strategy, tactics, and action plans, that becomes the work of the administration with the guidance of the Board of Education. So what we want to use our time tonight to talk about, besides what you'll do in your goal team, is to look again at that goal statement and see whether or not it feels good to you. If you've got any suggested edits to that, you certainly can share those. But we're going to ask you, even though I always say it is not the core team's job to decide the work that the district should do. But what we often like to do at the end of our strategic plans is ask the core team for your ideas and for your feedback. You all either work in this district, or you have children in this district, or you are alumni of the district, but you have great ideas. And so all that stuff we talked about a few meetings ago before we started talking about critical issues, this district would be a lot better if we only offered X. This district would be a lot better if students had access to Y. So what we would like you to do is talk about some specific initiatives that you think will meet the needs of these five goal areas. And as you talk, we'd like you to think about stuff that is specific. We always talk about SMART goals. You probably all have heard about SMART goals. Everybody defines them a little bit differently. When we do this, the S is specific. So engage the community, not as specific as I would like. Now, engage the community by hosting a pancake breakfast every year? To me, that's a specific tactic. That's a specific initiative. So get as specific as you can be. Think about measuring things. Is this something that could get measured? If we did this, is there a way to say, "It got finished? It got done? It moved the needle? It pushed us forward?" Whatever it is. If one of your specific goals is improve the graduation rate from 88% to 94%, and two years from now, the district measures, and you went from 88 to 92, you didn't get to 94, but yeah, you can measure. You improved by 4%, that's a measurable. So think about strategies that the administration could possibly, if the board and administration chose to move forward with that strategy, they could, they could design a metric around that strategy. The third one is, is it attainable? We want things that are stretches for you in Yellow Springs. We want you to be better a year, three years, five years from now than you are right now. So strategies that push you further are great. But we also want them to be realistic. We want them to be attainable. We want them to be relevant. Is it something that's needed right now? Is it going to make a district, a big difference for a group of teachers or a group of students? And sometimes you'll choose a strategy that only benefits one small group. Let's say it's a PD program for, for language teachers, right? Small group of people. But maybe it's a really important program that'll have spinoffs for a lot of people. Maybe it's a program for kindergartners. And those kindergartners, you know, maybe that's a fairly small number in the grand scheme of things, but everybody that goes to school in your district, at one point theoretically, is going to be a kindergartner. And we want them to be timely. So when you think about it, if you say, "I would really like it if the district did a pancake breakfast every year to raise money, and we focused on the senior citizens in our community for that pancake breakfast," think about how, when, when timeliness. When could you first offer it? How big a deal is it to get it off the ground? So, so think, just have your conversations, and it doesn't need to be super technical, but if you could just think about the letters contained in the word SMART, and say, you know, are we having a conversation around those sorts of parameters? Okay, so potential strategies to reach our goal and make our goal statements, as I said, 100% accurate. Now, the other variables you would love it, if you would consider, are these three variables. The first one is the one that is everybody's favorite, which is cost. Well, actually, I have staffing on here. But let's talk about cost first, okay? Is there, is it going to cost money to do this? There are some things that won't cost a lot of money, relatively speaking, and there are some things that cost a lot of money, relatively speaking. And I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, right? There are million-dollar strategies, and there are $150 strategies. So we'll ask you to think about cost. We'll ask you to think a little bit about staffing, right? Is this something that we can do with the skill and talent we have in our district right now? Wouldn't take, we wouldn't have to hire more people. We've got, we've got a teacher at the high school that's already really talented at this. We have an IT person here in our district that might be able to help with this. Whatever it is, if it's staffing, if it's not a big deal, or if it's staffing, it's a big deal. We're going to have to hire a consultant team to come in and teach us how to do this. This would be a great program for our students, but it'll require three new teachers, three new FTE or FTE teachers. That's a big deal. So think about that, and then think about time. If we put our heads together, could we talk about this, plan it, get it off the ground, implement it, and evaluate it in a relatively short period of time? The pancake breakfast is another easy example. Or is this something that, even if it moves as fast as it possibly can move, we're talking about three, four, or five years? So as you talk about your strategies in your small group, I'd like you to evaluate them. And we use, by the way, I love your shirt.
Thank you. Thank you.
It just caught my eye. I have to stop. All right. So as you're thinking about those variables, staffing, cost, time, if you could write them for us. Again, your feedback will go back to the administration as they think about it. Green, it's cheap. It's cheap. So on the cost variable, it's a G, it's green. Staffing, and we might have to take Sue off of what she's currently doing for a few hours a week so that she can put her head on this. But yeah, Sue could do it, and we've got her here. We don't have to hire somebody new. But, but she's going to have to rearrange things on her plate. It's going to be a pain. But she can do it. So let's give it a yellow. And then time, or any of these variables. If it's a big deal, then it gets a red. So pretty simple. Green, yellow, red. So what we would ask you to do is to choose a goal area. There are five, and we have one, two, three, four, and five tables. How fancy is that? So this, this is our sixth, if anybody wants to spread out. But let's just start back with, starting from our top. This is the bold teaching and learning table, okay? This will be our facilities table. This will be our finance table. This will be our community engagement table. And last but not least, this is our deep caring table. So, you don't have to move now, but when you move, you're going to do a couple of things. You are going to look at the goal statement for that goal, and you're going to determine whether or not it's good. We like what the group did. We're happy to have that forwarded to the board. Or we'd like to wordsmith it a little bit. This is our wordsmithing nomination. And then you're going to talk about strategies. If I'm in a community engagement group, what specifically could, what I propose that we do over the next two, three, or five years to increase that community engagement and investment in Yellow Springs Schools? What specifically do we need to do to get there, to make that goal statement true? And I'd like you to brainstorm a list, and maybe it's two things, and maybe it's eight things. When you're done, you're done. But if you could brainstorm a list, and then you could write them, yellow, red, or green on those three variables, that's our work for this evening. And that's the work that will come back to the administration and the board as they begin to think through potential strategies for, for the new strategic plan. Are there questions?
Yes, Cheryl, we can take one quick minute. This is Scott Gerfren from OSBA. And lucky you, you're going to be in our little video about doing strategic planning. So if you don't mind, he's just going to be taking some photos, so.
Yep. He's, he's not from a news station, so we're all.
Yeah. Just one question. What is the R for in SMART? Do we have these statements?
Relevant.
Relevant.
Relevant. Okay, so, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and a time factor. All right? But we're really interested in your take on how easy or tough these things would be for the district to envision and do. Okay? So now your assignment. Musical chairs. All right, everyone. Thank you for paying attention to your goal and giving your goal the kind of TLC that it deserves. So, the five groups all got together. Two of the five thought the goal statement as drafted made a lot of sense and still felt okay to them. Three of the groups made what I would consider some edits or some very small edits. So we want to respect the work that was done by those folks, but I'll just show you the new draft. So in bold teaching and learning, this one was shortened up quite a bit. It's, it's much tighter now, and says, "Yellow Springs Schools teach deeper learning competencies and expand the academic experience through innovative practices." Right? The facilities group added a couple of words here. "Yellow Springs Schools provides a safe, comfortable, and assessable learning environment that instills pride." Those are new words. "That instills pride and inspires current and future educational excellence." All right? The finance group thought their statement read as they wanted it to read and didn't touch it. "Y S Schools use resources strategically to support the district's mission and plans for a sustainable tomorrow." The school and community engagement made a very important change to theirs. And that's that they took the exclamation point off the end and just made it a period. "Through a culture of connection and collaboration, we foster inclusive engagement and community building that is accessible, relevant, and participatory." And last, but certainly not least, deep caring. "Y S Schools prioritize a culture of kindness, belonging, and well-being for all members of our school community." So those are the five draft statements that you talked about as you went into brainstorming some potential initiatives, or at least some ideas, to get your district's administration and board talking about. What do we mean by deep caring? What do we mean by a goal around finances, et cetera? So what we would like to do is, our last step in your work, is just have you walk us through your conversations and what's on your list. So, may I ask a group to go first, and it doesn't matter which one? We can start with number one, which is our bold teaching and learning group, and just go through the list? How about that? One of you want to step up and show off?
Okay, we were thinking about for academic progress and, you know, training, that we're doing is how can we develop something from key 12? That's something that is reliable, so that we know where our students are going as they're progressing through our school system. So developing key 12 stands to be a great example of progression. We're grouping different grade levels, and this is what they'll focus on. Provide deeper learning experiences that includes PBL, inquiry-based, and experiential learning at every grade level, which these things, you know, in mind. Nature and the environment, study, the arts, call to action, social justice work, and interdisciplinary projects. For us, the one plan is what we're developing. This is something the district leadership team's working on, focused on editor, how to make improvements, like looking at data and building, how to enable those improvements. And then doing presentations of learning, thinking about how we're building portfolios so that kids can see progress as they're moving through. But then at critical points, being able to talk about the things that we've made, using artifacts from the grade levels, saying, "This is how I know I'm going to do this."
Awesome. Anybody have any questions about that? So I have a couple of thoughts. One of the things is that as you're going through, I flip back to the slide because I'm going to ask myself, you know, if they were successful doing this, if students achieved, if teachers were happier with their craft as a result of some of these sorts of things, and communication between grade levels was better, if the fifth grade teacher had a better idea of how that fourth grade student had done before she progressed to fifth grade, whatever, all that good kind of stuff, you know, would this be true? I think that, I think that is the case. I also, what I like about this, and I didn't say when we first read the statement, is not only is it shorter, which I think sometimes is better, not always, but sometimes, but you took some of the edutude out of the original statement. I felt the original statement was really good, but this one, I think, is much more consumable by more folks.
We did decide, though, that we would have to define at some point in the strategic plan deeper learning competencies, because they are a specific set of skills.
And I recall that a specific strategy is to, is to define what we mean by deeper learning strategy. You know, I think that's, that's great.
Did you have any conversation about how these can be implemented right away? Or are they staggered, or are they costly? Do they take more staff?
I think about 20 more teachers. No, they're all things we're currently, that are currently under development. So like, the one plan is currently what we're working on as a district leadership team. These are all current, current.
As an educator, which of those is the toughest climb?
I would say that number four is going to be the newest thing. While there's, there are current examples of grade levels that are doing defenses of learning. Our, our middle school did, like their exhibition of their learning a couple of times during parent-teacher conferences, but then it became a sixth-grade practice as well. But to expand on fifth grade as well, I think, this year. So expanding on that district-wide would be a, would be a big one.
And I think that is, I think that the notion about, you know, asking a child, you know, "Show me," or sort of prove it, to share your learning, whatever, however you want to talk about that, I think is, is pretty exciting. It's empowering, I think, to kids, for sure. All right. Our second one is facilities. Our facilities group, time to show off. Who wants to do it?
All right, facilities. So we started with outdoor learning labs and just thinking about what could we offer, like, currently. And with that, we came up with maybe a stage so we could do programs or concerts outside, greenhouses, a pollinator garden. And this kind of comes from an idea that Jack and Terry saw when they, and Eli, when they were in Talladega, right? Talladega County Schools, and just offering those outdoor learning spaces. And then we went on to say, okay, what else could we do? Or what, what do we want to do? And that is offering STEM labs and offering the opportunity to really engage students in the science, technology, engineering math. Maker spaces, a green room, audio room, soft space. Incorporating sensory rooms and having the space to do that. A secure best fuel in-or-outdoor emergency communication. And for those of you that are not aware, we are talking about a communication of building-wide inside and also being able to have the capability to reach the students who are out at recess or, you know, families that are outside waiting on their students. Interconnected spaces. And Dorothy, I would say that is kind of what we were talking about, is a closed space where everyone is in one area and able to have kind of that circular motion that you were referring to. All the spaces being modernized and updated. I'll just leave it at that. Whether that's a Reno ad, we'll just leave it at that. Centralized collaborative and flex spaces. Just having the spaces for an opportunity to collaborate with your colleagues or for students to be able to collaborate, and having enough of those spaces. And then last but not least, having a space for the pre-K in the facilities that we have.
So a couple of thoughts. First of all, thank you very much for your work. Couple of thoughts. One is that, that last one you mentioned, the pre-K, that came directly out of a critical issue that you all talked about, for sure. So I appreciate that. So I appreciate that. Your list, too, is very specific. I love it. I think that, you know, you could throw a lot of those things at a team and say, "Plan this." You know, break this down into action steps and plan this, which is what our next step will be with your superintendent and board members in terms of talking through the next steps. So I like the fact that the stuff there is very specific and certainly measurable. And the outdoor learning labs, I think, for a district like Yellow Springs, that seems to me a hand and glove kind of a thing. So, good job. Any other thoughts? Yes?
So the only question that I have for the STEM labs, does that mean that there would have to be an adjustment to the curriculum for the STEM labs to be implemented? Or is that just something that would be integrated with what's already going on?
I would say that would be connected to the first group, what Sally mentioned in number one, and just having that great student progression and having the resources and curriculum necessary to implement that.
And thank you for the question. So what you'll see as you start, not just in the conversations tonight, but as you all start working your strategic plan, is that many of these things will feed the other things. Right? And superintendent and treasurer will start to sit down with some of the things. Let's say the board prioritizes these four or five things, and we can't do number three until we've done number two. Or we can't do number four until we've at least talked about number one. So many of these things will be very much aligned from a timing perspective and from a growth perspective. So, great question and answer. Okay. Our third one is Finances. So who is our?
Your team.
There we go.
So, you know, school finances are fairly straightforward, right? You want to bring in more of these things. So it's not like too complicated, but we felt like anytime you deal with school finances, you can have a struggle to get information out and get information coming to you from the community. So community involvement in school finances, specifically with the first one, maintaining and growing community engagement, you know, monitoring the website, making sure that there's plenty of information that's pertinent to, because school finance issues change with every upcoming levy and with every season, making sure that it's up to date, making sure that it's accessible, and people know exactly where it is. And obviously, you know, we smarted all this out. I'm not going to go through all of that, but, you know, there are ways to measure that to make it be effective. Or, sorry, be effective. And then the second one is maintaining growth community partnerships to create alternative sources of funding. Now, the district has done this in the past. We have like community growth position that lasted not terribly long. It was ways to brainstorm fundraising. So we've been there before and we've kind of done this. But I think there are ways that we can bring more people to the table to diversify the ways we're bringing in money from the community, but also like buying cooperatives. Like are there ways that we can go in with downtown businesses to bring in supplies that might be a little bit more cost-effective? And just thinking outside the box, bringing the village to the table, bringing different stakeholders, different business owners to the table, so we can figure out ways to be mutually beneficial. I think in the past, one thing we focused on was fundraising, and I don't know how successful I was. I wasn't involved in it, but it seemed super successful.
Thank you. Again, lots of melding across goal areas, partnering with community engagement for finances. So two great areas for you to think about work, both in educating the community about the district's financial picture and in increasing the size of the pie, right? Through alternative resources or partnerships or thinking outside the box, to use your words. So, great work. Thank you very much. Any questions for that group? Okay, we have School and Community Engagement. What do you have for us there? Besides leading up exclamation point.
So we had a lot, a lot of conversation, and honestly, this should probably be reorganized a little bit, but I'll hit some talking points. We talked about fine arts and athletics and extracurriculars and academics, like how can we, you know, build a bridge between the community more and the school, what's going on, whether it's volunteerism or events, you know, whatever's going on there, and how we can help act and register that. So one of the ways would be to identify volunteer opportunities and to connect the community, the members with them, and then strengthen community pride through possibly a drum line at high school for activities and events. Having a performance space for our fine arts was really important so that we can showcase our fine arts, even if we have to do massive fundraiser with my idea. And that would also help build the community pride if it's not done through the LFI. And strengthen our relationship with the chamber and the community connection, maybe through career, like connecting some of the community members and their expertise with maybe what students might want to do in their future careers. And then have a community and school liaison. I know the, um, the Community Foundation has a website now, and it's a lot of it's around volunteerism and connecting, making that connection. So I think that we would start there and try to work with them on, you know, building that base of volunteerism. And then connect those without kids that are currently in school by maybe communicating through district events. I was thinking, I was thinking possibly next year of having maybe a weekly event that go out that are like upcoming events for all the community. And at the bottom, then we could fit all the volunteer opportunities that maybe are connecting to those events, and we could do that on an ongoing basis. And then what's not here, and I should have had on here, was to have opportunities for the volunteers to come in, connect with our PBL projects, and having those experts come in and work with teachers and students on lending more experts to the projects.
So PBL mentors, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Great list. Great list. I like, I like the young conversations around people that don't have what I would call a natural reason to be in your school buildings, people who don't have kids, because they're important, really important to you. And I don't know why I thought of it, but I was in a district a few weeks ago that did some data digging because they have a levy on the ballot in November, and found out something, I mean, it was a terrible number. It was like 23% of the parents of the students in their buildings are actually even registered to vote. They were talking about, "Let's have a voter registration gig at one of our athletic events." Right? So, you know, things like that. So you have a great list there and lots of stuff to chew on. And what I love about community engagement, a lot of this stuff is cheap, but it's heavily, relies heavily on people's willingness. It's not cheap in terms of hours, but it's cheap in terms of dollars. So that's, that's one reason that, but if you're good at community engagement, a lot of the other stuff gets a lot easier, too. So, thank you for that great list. All right. And now we've got the people who deeply care about deep caring.
Okay, so deep caring felt like a very big umbrella. I afraid we didn't get down to specifics because we really wanted to, but we did come up with a couple of memorable things. But primarily, what kind of floated to the top was communication and support. I think those were kind of the themes of like deeply caring that comes in all forms. But one of the big ones immediately to all of us was mental health. And we have some good support in our schools now, like a counselor in Los Montes, two up in the high schools, as well as a voting district provider. But we want more. That might be a red or yellow as far as cost, but more staff, more hours, more availability because the few that we have here are only those few and can't clone themselves. And also mentoring, and that leads into trauma training with teachers, training the teachers to have more skills, especially newer teachers, so that they can handle a lot of things in the classroom without having to reach out quite heavily. And that becomes a form of just more professional development. There could be some, but there could be more. And then maybe if some are trained, they could also mentor others about what to do. If you have a kid who's having a response and it turns into this big thing, and what to do in those moments so they don't escalate. You can measure those in terms of like documenting those events, how many of those events are happening, and then documenting what kind of training we're doing, maybe teacher satisfaction, parent satisfaction, watch kids' development and how, how many of kids are having those experiences. We also talked about, there's a student advocate. I just learned that recently. Here's one for the district. And that's super, that's awesome. And she is one person, but maybe increasing how many advocates are or what her role is or, you know, what her public persona is, what her job is, what that means to be a student advocate. We can talk more about that. And then we talked about caring for staff by, you know, these exit interviews, which may happen already, but just asking staff and students, "Why are you leaving? What's leading you to leave? What, you know, what we might be able to improve on?" And also mentoring new folks who are coming. And you can certainly measure turnover, where our staff are going and so forth, and what hiring is like. But also mentoring new staff, new families, making, again, the support, support and communication. It goes back to all of that. And then another theme that popped up was shared experience. So I think a big part of deep caring is community. So connecting, having shared experiences, whether it's you've got people in theater, so you've got juniors in high school interacting with fifth graders. Now there's a link, we have a shared experience. Or we're involved all together. Now I see in the hallway, we have a link, we're a community. There's been more caring because we have a shared experience. We're in a club together, and we're in sport together, we're on a team. So really pushing those extracurriculars and the clubs and the opportunities there. And you can measure, you know, how many kids are using extracurricular programs. So at Los Montes, they're, they're doing a big demand for that, we're responding to that. And we're leaning on people in the community with their skills and using their skills for these extracurriculars, as well as teachers and parents who are volunteering their time to work with the kids. We also thought, uh, Skills for Life, which is something that Mr. Gudel was teaching at different times at Los Montes, sort of part of the curriculum, teaching those social development, emotional health skills to kids as part of the curriculum has been, I think, really valuable to my kids and to a lot of others. So keeping that really strong as the base of what kind of feels like our kindness culture here in Los Montes. I think we really drive that as one of the selling points for Yellow Springs, I think, is that we're anti-holy, inclusive, including kids, we're zero typical, for example, but really just sort of an overall attempt at inclusivity and tolerance. And then, is there anything else? We did put a little bit of that college diet, just again, beefing up the hours or the staff to support what happens to our kids after they go, after they graduate. Just showing that we care about what happens to them later. But obviously, we would want to drive down a way where we get more specific.
Sure. Sure. And I think, I think, I love, I love this goal because there's so many places you can take it. You mentioned a bunch of them, which is if we talked about what could we do that makes kids feel more connected? You talked about that shared experience. There could be a whole lot of lists of those things. What if we wanted to focus on belonging? There could be a list of things. What if we wanted to focus on sharing? Right? There could be, there could be a list of things. So many of the things in your goal statement could be actually focus areas as you develop specific strategies. Many of them you listed there are really good ones to start thinking about. Okay. So you have contributed a whole lot of ingredients to this pot of the Yellow Springs Strategic Plan stew. And we will be getting out running meeting notes, the last set of running meeting notes you will have. And our next step as facilitators will be a follow-up, being with the board and superintendent and treasurer. Our purpose, Terry and I, will want to help the district develop a brochure that's included in the strategic plan as a brochure. Also included in the strategic plan, if the district wants to take advantage of it sometime, whether that's a year from now, six months from now, forever, is we've been waiting for the auditor of state to get back to us on rules for boards and districts to survey their communities. And we're starting to get a better picture, and it looks like it's going to be a friendlier thing for us than even we thought in some ways, less for superintendents but more for boards. So, and we'll be talking about that, but hopefully, we will produce a nice four-color brochure that can be handed out in your school buildings, put on your website, put at the chamber office, you know, in restaurants around town, whatever you would like to do, that we'll be working on that. Then the other thing that we'll want to do in our follow-up meeting, just so you know, is make sure that the board has whatever they need to move forward in terms of adopting this strategic plan, and also some, some steps forward to help them keep their arms around this. So the monitoring and assessment and evaluation piece, how to plan these strategies, how to monitor them, how the superintendent can keep her arms around them so that she can adequately report to the board the kinds of questions that we would hope the board will continue to ask to make sure things, things move forward. So that will be our last step. But your work is finished. And you've provided a great service to the community. And before we close off, I'd like to turn it over to you to put up the words. Okay, great.
I just wanted to be reminded around the strategic plan, is there a set of years associated with it? And what are those years?
You know, it's hard to put a firm number on it. Because if you propose something in your strategic plan that takes you five years to accomplish, but I will tell you, what I would tell the board is, as far as I, I really believe that the board's role in governance is keeping the plan alive. And I think a big part of that is annually saying, is our vision, mission, goals, and goal statements, are they still relevant? So having an annual conversation around, are these, are these five goals still important for Yellow Springs Schools? Do we still have work to do with these five goals? And is there anything that we really need to focus our attention on that could not be aligned directly to one of these goals? So I think that reinvestment conversation is really important. And then I would tell you that probably every four to five years is when districts will give us a call and say, Terry did earlier this year sort of a mini with the district that she came back and said, "Could you just do one session with our, bring our core team back together and do one session and let's revitalize the plan and make sure it's still healthy?" So it's hard to say, but I think five years now, particularly given the state of state funding and school finance and the legislature in Columbus, it's really hard to put a five-year mark on anything.
But we do have a lot of districts that are saying 2023 and beyond. So they're not trying to put an end date on it, but they're saying, you know, "We're going to keep working on this."
So I can't answer your question specifically, but I think five years is a long target.
So would you suggest maybe like a three-year review?
I think a three-year review is healthy, for sure. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to do, I'm going to interrupt things slightly, maybe not me. I have something I feel very passionate about that didn't fit underneath any of the goals, and I just wanted to bring it up as a possibility. I noticed when we were talking about preschools, and we have a preschool space here listed. And then people were surprised to find out we have a preschool, because we do. And so I was just wondering if it might be possible, I don't know under what which category, is to include the idea that that knowledge gets out there a little bit more. Parents of children with special needs have a right to have their preschool kids get special support. And that's good for everybody. And I feel like maybe that needs to be put out a little bit more. So I was wondering if that might be a possibility to add as a goal.
Sure. I think, I think a goal around branding and marketing our preschool opportunity better, I mean, puts it mildly, I guess, but it could go in this goal, the first one, the Goal of Learning and Teaching and Learning Goal, could certainly go in a community engagement interest. It could certainly go in a deep caring. It could certainly go in a deep caring goal, right? So I think the answer to your question is I'm going to say absolutely. And it could, it could fit in many places.
So we, and is that something we can do now? Karina can do this, but I just want, I don't want anybody to walk out here and. We are required by law to do child find so that our special ed preschool students are identified. So I don't want anybody to think that we don't do that. We do. But we certainly, I will get with Karina, we can, I mean, this is stuff that we don't have to wait for the strategic plan to push out additional communication about. So thank you for that.
Good. Do I say anything before we let everybody go?
I do. So you mentioned, friends, the auditor of state. I hold out no hope about a survey, but you know, we, we've had a lot going on here in the district and I don't need to spell it out for you. I appreciate your commitment, not only your time commitment, but your emotional commitment to the strategic planning process. Quite honestly, this is our heartbeat. This is what a school and school district is about. And I think that for me, these meetings have been a nice change of pace because I feel like we can talk about the things that are important, the things that impact our students and teachers and families and communities that all really center around kind of teaching and learning, right? So I found these meetings enlightening. It was my pleasure to hear your input and, and you know, it's always good to have somebody say, hey, did you think of this? So thank you. I think what in my mind, the, the future rollout of this is to have the board approve the vision, mission, core values and goals. And then the district team will take these, this information, build off that, develop action steps from that, from these strategies. Because I know I can speak for my group, we didn't, we didn't get anywhere here finished. And then I'm happy, even though officially we're finished, I'm happy to, as we do this piece, to push this out to you if you are interested so you can just say, oh yeah. Because I think that, that, that might be a closed loop piece for you. And I, and I don't want to let you go when you feel like, oh gosh, I didn't, I didn't finish that and I want to do, to finish that. So I will share this, but it is, it will be the responsibility of the administrative team and our teacher leaders to really spell this out so that then that piece can be put with the vision, mission, core values in, in a nice, tidy strategic plan that will really guide our work. So thank you so much. Questions for me? I think you should give yourselves a round of applause.
Yeah, and I, I really want to thank the board, treasurer and superintendent for all their support during this, for including you. There are a lot of districts that do this more than the dark because frankly, it's easier. It'd be real easy for a superintendent and treasurer to sit down and write out a strategic plan and, and get a board endorsement. And it's a lot messier this way, a lot harder, a lot longer. I think you end up with a much better project. And, and also for the snacks and the space and Leslie for your support. Thank you to all of you. Thanks. Have a great summer.
Enjoy what's left. I think your son out.
Yeah. Does anyone?
Yes, yes. Board members, I do need a motion.
I'm, I'm.
Cam.
Are you taking?
It's yours. It's yours. All right, can we hear it, Maria?
Yes.
Okay. And like, vote fast, please, zero, your turn, Pat.